Mr. Reba, roll call please.
Mr. Bonomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Mr. Fume.
Here.
Ms. Kay.
Here.
Mr. John.
Present.
Mr. Mahalik.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell. Mrs. Scarsella.
Here.
And Mr. Zoll.
Here.
Now, some executive sessions held as follows, December fifteenth, twenty fifteen, personnel, December seventeenth, twenty fifteen, personnel. Public comment directed on the board items' agenda only. Three minutes maximum amount of time. Mr. Fume?
Mr. Childs. Doctor, I'm sorry. Mr. President, I'd like to, Bob Childs, from Hazel Township, I'd like to address item number twenty-nine. The resolution being prepared by Attorney James Donguard to try to help us with the budget crisis is currently going on. A little bit of research over the last forty-eight hours since we last convened reveals that apparently the Pennsylvania's legislative, the Pennsylvania Legislative Group at, in Congress, had petitioned the governor to release federal funds to the school districts maybe two months ago. He wrote back saying that there was a constitutional clause that kept him from doing so, and he could not release those funds. That information is supposed to come through in terms of what's in that particular part of the Constitution. Haven't seen it yet. I think the thing that bothers me the most about this whole situation is that the state is holding on to federal funds. Federal funds that should be a pass-through, and that bothers me a whole heck of a lot. And I would ask, Mr. Reba, approximately how much money does the federal government pay us a year? Is it about twelve million dollars, thirteen million dollars?
It's a little less than that, but.
Pretty cool.
One or ten.
Okay, and asking, you, we don't have an attorney here tonight? Yes, sorry. How many laws are we breaking in terms of twisting our budget one way and another way and another way in order to pay off the various bills that have to be paid? In theory, we're not supposed to do that. You've got a budget to set down, the state looks at it and says, here's what you've got, you've got to do it this way, or you've got to explain every exception you make. What are we into it from a legal point of view?
Nothing at this point, but certainly I can discuss that with attorneys lesser.
I think, Dr. Charles, I think Mr. Fume has information on what you just asked.
Good. Yes, as you mentioned it at the committee meeting the other day about talking to the congressman, and I did, I did some research through Congressman Barletta's office, and basically what you're saying is the same. The only money, the federal government has released money to the state. State has not released it to us other than some money for the school lunch and breakfast program, that's it. But I know Congressman Barletta had sent a letter to Governor Wolf also with the, as you said, the state contingency of Congress, asking to release the federal funds, and Governor Wolf's office is citing Act one-seventeen. So I have a copy of that bill here. Section three of it says, "The state treasurer is hereby specifically prohibited from issuing any warrant for requisitioned funds which are derived in whole or in part from federal funds unless such funds have been specifically appropriated by an act of the General Assembly." So that they're going by, there's no budget, so they can't. Can't release it. However, I know that the Erie School District had met with the governor and asked for a interest-free advance of one-point-nine million dollars, and that was rejected. So, but I, there may be ways around it, I mean, maybe line item vetoes, I don't know. But apparently, they're not trying to find any ways around this.
I'm hoping that the legal team here will look into very carefully into what happens, because we, we shares a dick and shouldn't have to pay the interest on.
I believe though, I believe that the, they did release money for legislative staff salaries, though.
Thank you, Dr. Charles. Approve Board Minutes, Organization Board Minutes, meeting from December seventeen.
Second.
Mr. Reba?
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
H. Treasurer's report for November.
So moved, second.
Mr. Reba?
All in favor of approving the treasurer's report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
At this time, number twenty-eight will be removed from the agenda. Number twenty-eight will be removed from the agenda.
Short presentation, Dale is here from our auditing firm, Malley LLP, on the audit report for six-thirty, two thousand and fifteen.
Good evening. I know you're busy and have a lot going on, so I'll try not to take up too much of your time. I'm just going to hit on a few highlights of the audit this year for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. You'll see some pretty significant changes this year compared to the prior year, and that's due to the implementation of GASB sixty-eight in the current year. What that did was push the unfunded pension liabilities onto your balance sheet. So the first thing you'll notice is when you read the audit report itself, there's a modification to the audit report basically saying that we had to restate the prior year to record GASB sixty-eight. GASB sixty-eight had to be implemented by retrospective application, meaning you had to restate the prior year instead of just going forward. This is in no way a qualification to the report, the actual audit opinion is still unqualified, it's just something to draw attention to the reader, something that's considered important. And the next thing I want to draw your attention to then is the very last footnote in the financial statements, is a footnote that describes the prior period adjustment in which we adopted GASB sixty-eight. So, just a quick rundown on GASB sixty-eight, what that is, is, like I said, it pushed the unfunded pension liability on your balance sheet. So what Piersers did was went out and had an actuary calculate the liability for the entire Piersers portfolio, and then allocated it out to amongst the five-hundred school districts or five-hundred-one school districts based on your covered payroll. So, out of the thirty-four, approximately thirty-four billion-dollar unfunded pension liability, the Hazelton School District's share of that was approximately one-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars. About five-point-four million of that was allocated to the food service funds based on the payroll that's allocated to that fund, the rest of it's on the government-wide, full accrual balance sheet. The next thing I want to draw your attention to is the, the general fund, which is the school district's main operating fund. As of June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, I know things have significantly deteriorated all across the state due to the budget impasse. But as of then, the fund balance was twelve-point-four million dollars, which was thirty-five-and-a-half percent of the balance sheet, which is a very healthy fund balance. It's considerably above the safe harbor twenty percent that the GFOA recommends. On the flip side of that, the general fund had an operating loss for the year of three-point-eight million dollars, which was budgeted to be covered by the fund balance. So, just so you're, you know, just so you're aware, if you're going to continue to eat away at the fund balance with losses like that, you know, you're eventually going to end up with not having any fund balance left at all. On the statement of revenues and expenditures for the general fund, budget to actual, the revenues came in about two million dollars favorable to budget, but the expenses were one-point-six million unfavorable, so you still had a favorable to budget of about three-hundred, or thirty, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars for the year. The last thing I want to point out is for the single audit, which is the audit of the federal funds, we had an unqualified opinion for that, we didn't find any findings, there was no significant deficiency, no material misstatements. For this year, we audited the Title I grants, which is approximately thirty-four percent of your federal awards. And I just wanted to point out that the school district qualifies as low-risk audit under the A-one-thirty-three guidelines due to its, the fact that there isn't no findings for the single audits. If there's any questions, I'll.
No questions. It's going very well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Butler?
Thank you, Mr. John. We begin the agenda with curriculum and instruction, approving items one through fifteen with one motion.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Reba?
Any questions on one to fifteen? All in favor of items one through fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Nutrition, approve items sixteen and seventeen with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
If I may, just address nutrition, and once again, Mr. President, thank them, I think is.
Nutrition here?
Oh. Again, what a wonderful, awesome event that you hosted. I know that you had so much help from our high school kid, it was great seeing the high school kids this year. I'll be honest, I don't think they did as good of a job as Mr. John did handing out the candy, but, but your students were amazing, Mr. Patron, that, I mean, you know, I had one, one of the participants come up to me and she said, "This is my only Christmas event," and I, you know, it just was so amazing that we were able to bring that to her, just beautiful, all-around, amazing, great walk-up, thank you guys so much, and I know you had sponsors and help, and, again, you know, the assistance with the high school this year was tremendous, and we thank everyone.
I'd also like to second Mr. Mahalik's thoughts, because I had the chance to attend it this year with my mother-in-law and my wife, and we had a great time. In fact, so great that you didn't want to leave. And watching Mr. Patron and Mr. Zoll and some other people walking around with coffee was a pleasure, too. So, we just had an all-around, and you took good care of us. Mr. Patron was on the other side of the room.
Mr. Chapman, I heard the beverage service was a little slow, but.
Depending on which side of the room you were on.
Which side was better? Be honest now.
I have to be honest.
Sorry, Rocco, but.
But thank you.
Rocco, your girls, the kids, they did a great job, fantastic. Marie's daughter was there, I mean, pushing and smiling and talking to the people and that, they, it was, you could tell every, every person that was there was actually enjoying it, enjoying the kids, it was great, it was fantastic.
I'm so proud of our students, and they said afterwards, how much they enjoyed it, I'm so proud, but thank you for recommending.
I hope you took some hints, though, on how to pour.
Mr. Reba?
Numbers sixteen and seventeen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Transportation, item number eighteen, recommend board approve the attached.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Reba?
Number eighteen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Technology will be item by item, number nineteen, recommend board approve the letter of agency for year nineteen, E-rate services as provided for the.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Reba?
Number nineteen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Number twenty, recommend board approve the payment of forty-nine-hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Reba?
Number twenty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Twenty-one, recommend the board approve the purchase of one-hundred-and-thirty-four HP tablet computers to be used as part of the hybrid learning program being implemented at Arthur Street in Hazel Township Early Learning Center. Equipment is to be purchased from Hewlett-Packard Public Sector Sales.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
I have one. Is this planned to expand to other schools eventually, or is it a pilot program at this point?
Mr. Zoll, this is a pilot program at this point. We will be watching our students' performance and growth and various different sources of data to ascertain the effectiveness of the program, and then look to expand to other elementary schools in the district.
Is there actually, though, a plan, are we talking a year, or this, finish out this school and look to start it for next year in another school, or?
Mr. Denali might comment on this as well, but we are running the program this year at these two schools in hopes of expanding it into next year, but we're not prepared to share, you know, or specify that plan with the board at this point until we see the actual data and to see if we're making the gains that we expect to make.
Any other questions? Mr. Reba?
Number twenty-one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Number twenty-two, recommend the board approve the purchase of eight Leapfrog, LeapPad three-dim mobile learning center bundles to be used as part of the hybrid learning program primarily at pre-k.
So moved.
Any questions? Mr. Reba?
Number twenty-two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Thanks to Dr. Briggs, the information that was requested, that you sent, I appreciate it on the program, thank you.
Student activities, athletics, and extracurricular, approve items twenty-three through twenty-six with one.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers twenty-three through twenty-six, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Facilities and capital projects, approve item number twenty-seven with.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
Number twenty-seven, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Under Finance, number twenty-nine, recommend board approve the resolution prepared by Attorney James Donguard, authorizing the district to borrow a line of credit from FNCB in the amount of ten million dollars due to the state budget situation.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. I'd like to begin by thanking Board Member Fume for reaching out on behalf of the district and finding out that, that information. Thank you, Mr. Fume, I know you have a very busy schedule. I almost got a little sick, and then I realized what's really important in life, when I heard you say that they released the funds so the legislators could continue to get paid, and people should be able to, you know, make a living, but.
I'll show you the, a letter from the congressman.
That, I mean, that's, you know, so, again, obviously, obviously, there's really no pressure being placed upon these people, I know they're right now meeting, and hopefully we will have a budget by the end of this evening, but if we do not, I would, I would feel that we probably won't have one before Christmas. And then again, we're, you know, we're left out here hanging. I look at, and I don't know if the public, was the public given this, Mr. Reba? The fees?
Just provided that.
And I appreciate this, absolutely. Well, we'd certainly give it to, to the members of the media to share it, but if, if we used all of the money, which, ten million, it goes very, very little, with a budget of a hundred and nearly fifty million, we would be paying back just about, just a little under fifty thousand dollars in interest and fees, fifty thousand dollars. That's, I mean, that is a position, that's a whole teacher position. Teacher that could, that could lessen class sizes, a teacher that could provide direct instruction, could put in some interventions, it's a nurse's fee, it's a beginning nurse's salary, I mean, there's so, I mean, computers, I mean, Mr. Briggs, fifty thousand dollars, gone, never to be come back to this district, and I'll, it bothers me tremendously, not, no matter how this works out, we vote, I understand, I know everybody has our kids in our community, you know, best in mind, but I will tell you, I will remind every one of us when there's something that comes up and it's a trip to Nationals, you know, maybe when the, the very successful shooting range that we have needs money, and, and we look and we question eight thousand, nine thousand, send people to Florida, our students, send them to Tennessee, you know, all these wonderful accomplishments, and we have to sit here and scratch our head, do we have four, five, six thousand dollars for these kids' amazing accomplishments, and we're going to give fifty thousand dollars for something that is, will never come back to us at all? That's completely, completely disheartening, and, and this is a board that has always really looked at our community, especially our senior citizens, and, and kept them in mind, and this is slightly reckless in my, but I know we have to do what we have to do. Thank you for listening, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Mr. Mahalik. On the same note, Mr. Mahalik, I think all of us up here are torn as to what's right and what's wrong. And I think, and we discussed it quite a bit, that the logical way to do this is all five-hundred school districts in the state of Pennsylvania shut down at once, not just here and there. If we shut down and somebody else doesn't, then we'll get crucified, why did they shut down? Who's going to watch our kids? We have to go to work, et cetera, and so on. If we don't shut down, then the other thing comes back, Bob, what you just said, we're wasting our money. You're between the devil and deep blue sea, you don't know what to do. But I think each and every one of us up here can make up our own mind what we think is right in our own mind and what we have to do. It's a very difficult decision for each and every one of us, and I agree, I agree with the senior citizen part, because I know it's hard to believe, I am one, it's hard to believe that, but I have a lot of friends that are in that situation and they can't afford it. And it's very difficult for us to say, we're going to spend this money, period, but we have to do what we have to do.
If I could add one thing, even though I'm going to vote yes for this money, I'm hoping that we don't have to use any of it, and if that would come to be true, the only cost to the district, and correct me if I'm wrong, would be two thousand dollars in fees. So I'm hoping that that's what happens, but I do believe that we have to have something available just in case, because you cannot trust the state, obviously, because it's already the end of December and nothing's been done. Although I agree with everything that Mr. Mahalik said, I'm still going to vote yes for the money.
And if I, if I could just say, I think it's important to know that when this started out, we were looking at ten thousand dollars in fees. So if you remember back a few weeks ago, in order to borrow, we were looking at ten thousand dollars, and, and the business office with Tony went out and, and made a lot of calls, a lot of contacts, and our fees are down to roughly two thousand dollars at this point. So there's a savings already right off the top. If we don't have to use the money, look what we saved, if we do have to, well, you know, that's the price to do business, and it's sad, and I agree, Mr. Mahalik, a hundred percent with you, but, you know, our hands may be tied. Just so you know that at this point, though, we're just voting on getting the paperwork done, getting the loan approved, and moving on. If it changes from that point on, you know, we certainly have options.
And I also am torn on this, and no one wants to spend extra money if they don't have to, I mean, we, we're trying to watch every dollar, but unfortunately, we're pushed into a corner here, and it's something we need to do because we just can't let the children suffer from this, because of this, because of officials not being able to come to an agreement on the budget for how many months, so unfortunately, this is something that's necessary.
Any other board members?
Tony, let me ask you just one question. So if we would, if this would not pass, which I'm sure that it will, but if it would not, what is the latest that you could apply for this and still not put the district into jeopardy of not being able to pay the bills?
As, as we said the other night, we think we can get into the middle or late part of January. There is some lead time with this, so I'm, I don't know exactly what the lead time is, I'm thinking with the banks that we're talking to, we can get it done pretty quickly. I'd have to estimate there'd be a two-week lead time on it.
So would it not be prudent to then try to hold off until maybe the beginning of the year to see if the state actually could pass the budget since they're supposed to be close to passing it now, and saving even the two thousand dollars? Or is it just emergent that it be done right now?
Could I say something there? I think that you've got also taken into consideration if, several times, we've heard that the state's almost ready to pass the budget and it hasn't happened. Also, how, what's the timeframe from when, if they pass the budget today till we actually start getting some money? So, there's two items to consider. Obviously, if we apply for this and, and we get it and we don't use it, then it's two thousand dollars, which, it's still two thousand dollars, but it's better to be ready.
And Ms. Kay.
That's why I'm asking for a timeframe, though.
It, our rates are, I don't know how long our rates are guaranteed for also, that could change in a, you know, when the new year comes.
The other thing is, they just raised interest rates, the Fed, so we have to watch, they said they may slowly climb, so, I don't know.
Thank you, Mrs. Kay, anyone else? Mr. Reba, roll call?
Number twenty-nine, Mr. Bonomo.
Yes.
Mr. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Fume.
Yes.
Ms. Kay.
No.
Mr. Mahalik.
No.
Mrs. Scarsella.
Yes.
Mr. Zola.
Yes.
And Mr. John.
Yes.
Motion passes, six, two, one.
Continuing with Finance, approving items thirty through thirty-six.
So moved.
With one motion.
Any questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers thirty through thirty-six, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Thirty-seven is the presentation of bills.
Any questions on any of the bills? Mr. Reba?
Need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any questions?
Number thirty-seven, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Superintendent's agenda, approve items thirty-eight through forty-eight with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Reba?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. John, if I may, is that thirty-eight to forty-eight?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, then, obviously, if I can, special attention to forty-two, forty-three, forty-four. I started my career with Mrs. Caputo, and it's great names, great people, obviously, again, the district loses, but I wish them the healthiest and, and most enjoyable retirement, and thank them for all their years of service to our district.
And I would second that.
Mr. Mahalik, from my seat, I've had the pleasure of working extensively with these three individuals. They are the epitome of the coincidental professional, just their dedication to not only their content area, but to the district, to the kids, and the manner in which they serve our young folks, just a pleasure to have spent a little short of three years with these individuals.
Dr. Butler, I'd like to echo your thing, your statements, I had the pleasure of working with all three of them, very professional, would do anything for the kids and for the school district, they're, they're going to be really, really missed.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we do.
Yes.
Mr. Reba?
Thirty-eight to forty-eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
And approve items forty-nine through fifty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Reba?
Numbers forty-nine through fifty-seven, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Any statements from any of the board members, on anything?
Yes, I'd like to introduce a motion to open up the girls' softball job for this upcoming year, and I think we need, if this does go through, I think we need to tend to it sooner than later, because I believe the students should be starting their training for the season, so my motion is to open up this girls' softball job for two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Two thousand and sixteen.
A second. Is that, oh, is that, to discuss, we have to make a second, right? I'll make the second.
It was second.
It was second. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Is that the high school?
Yes, the high school girls' softball job.
For this upcoming year?
Yeah.
I just think that's something that should be further discussed in executive session, but, so I wouldn't vote yes on something like that tonight, but.
I believe there's a motion on the floor. Mr. John, we, I think we need public comment, public comment on this?
Yes. Any public comment on that motion? Was there a second?
Dr. Childs?
Mrs. Scarsella?
I don't, I don't think Mrs. Scarsella was here at that.
No, she wasn't, but I believe we, we took a vote, and correct me if I'm wrong in this, on all of the spring coaches, would have been spring, and I think we approved all of them for this upcoming year, so this is something new to me. That we did do, but that wasn't with the new board members that are here tonight. They weren't involved in that.
So what you're saying, Mr. Chapman, is since the board members, new board members weren't around, we should discuss this further in executive session?
That's just my opinion, but I'm only one out of nine, so I'd like to hear from some other people.
There's a motion on the floor, and seconded. Mr. Reba?
And I'm sorry, Mr. John, I appreciate, so opening it doesn't mean not retaining the current coach, it means we're opening to see if there's other coaches out there that might.
That's true, but we already did retain all of these coaches, didn't we? Or am I wrong on that? Am I thinking the wrong way?
We did.
I'm sorry, I thought we had an athletic committee meeting this week, which I thought I was on, and we didn't discuss anything, so.
It's a new motion.
Well, I understand, it's a new motion, Mr. Benomo. I just don't understand why we had a committee meeting, and why I thought I was on that committee, but.
And it wasn't brought up then.
Have, have no idea about it, and, I mean, I questioned Dr. Briggs over things, and he was nice enough to give us the information before we had to make a vote, and this was just completely thrown at us right now. So we probably would need more information to make an educated vote.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, and it was seconded, so I believe we have to vote on it. We can vote it down? Am I correct, attorney? Mr. Reba? On the motion?
On the motion, Mr. Benomo.
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
No.
Mr. Fume?
Yes.
Mrs. Kay?
No.
Mr. Mahalik?
Yes.
Mrs. Scarsella?
Yes.
Mr. Zola?
Yes.
And Mr. John?
No.
Motion passes 5 to 3.
Anyone from the audience like to address the board? If not, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Min, roll call. Agree?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Meeting adjourned.